Okay, I'm gonna call the Planning Commission meeting to order Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, six o'clock.
All meeting, all members present with the exception of Ryan Silvestri.
Okay, I'm gonna skip the opening statement because everybody here has heard it. Consideration of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda? Can't think of any. Um, approval of minutes for July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second, I did read them online.
Do you guys have any comments? I did not find any errors. I perused this morning and when they first came out. Do you want to just go ahead? Uh, okay.
Oh, no, I, I don't have any comments, I'm just.
Okay, so I'll call, I'll call the question, all those in favor, Ted, did you have anything?
No.
All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving along to the standalone flood regulations for the town of Ludlow, um, to public hearing. Um, Allison, here's, if we need any help, this is Allison from Mark, from Marcus here, but basically, we already did this, and this is actually my error, because when we did the village ones, we looked through the town ones, we had those two people from Pima here that helped us out, and um, we sent, we also wanted to send the town one to a public hearing, but then, that public hearing was scheduled so many months later that I didn't do it, and I only did the village. But it's basically just a formality to send it to a public hearing here first with the Planning Commission, and then to.
Recording in progress.
To the Select Board. So basically, I just need a motion to send it there. We've already looked it all over, we've already, you know.
Send it where?
Send it to a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So what we're doing is we're replacing, within the town zoning, we're replacing the um, flood section, which is section six, I believe, with this standalone, um, with these standalone flood regs, which we already approved for the village and did the same thing, took it out of the village zoning, and put it by itself as its own document. So I'll make a motion to do that, to send our standalone flood regulations to the town of Ludlow to a public hearing.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to our town zoning updates with Martha.
What's this, wait a minute, what's this housing study?
Study number seven.
Oh man, no, I'm sorry, that's not right, yeah, I didn't put a space there, Allison's looking at me, I wonder why.
Oh, no, I thought, I was like, we're thinking of any order, I thought this is your.
It's, I didn't put a space between six and seven, so.
Hi, I'm not territorial.
Alright, so Martha, it's not actually your turn right now, it's, uh, I forgot the space there.
It's actually gonna be Erin presenting, she did the whole.
And I got her, um, I have her.
I brought my computer too.
Right, I have her jump drive right here. So am I all ready to share, Will? Yep.
Can I make a, a comment?
Certainly.
You're, I don't believe you ever approved the minutes for the twenty-fourth.
I saw them.
Yeah, because um, July, uh, so you might wanna put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because we already went through the changes card, okay, so approve minutes for twenty-fourth, June twenty-fourth.
And they're in our packet, yes.
Oh, they are, well, Charlotte's got more on the ball than we have, thank you, Charlotte. I didn't realize we hadn't approved the minutes.
Charlotte's.
Alright, I guess I gotta open up.
Did bring your package.
I gotta open up her jump drive before I can. Find her jump drive.
This is housing.
Where is your jump? Um, I got, um, Erin's jump drive for this, what she's gonna present the housing study. Get to show up on my laptop. And Erin, it's definitely different from the one you emailed us, right? And the one I put in the agenda, uh, when I put.
That's the whole study in itself, this is the presentation.
Okay.
So, and I've got a couple hard copies of it.
Oh wait, I found it, got it, got it, got it. Okay, so which one is it, Ludlow study, obviously?
Yeah.
Ludlow study?
Sure. Four copies here, so.
I'm just gonna move it to my desktop, just so I can easily find it.
Ted.
Yep, gotcha.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, I'll get it.
Don't worry, I have to do this.
Just. Terry can have that.
Yeah.
You got one?
No, I didn't get one.
You know what, we can, you can, we'll share.
And I got it up there too.
If I'm gonna mark it up, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
Okay, here it is. Is that it?
I'll try to watch it up there.
Okay.
Yeah.
You ready?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, excellent. So, uh, Mount Ascot Regional Commission was tamed to do a housing study, as you've all seen in the packet, how many people have gone through, I, I know I received a lot of comments, good comments from Charlotte. Everybody else, pretty familiar with it? Good? So, today's agenda, if, I don't know if you can go to presenter mode on that, on the PDF.
I mean preview, is that where I could do it?
Um, there should go to view. And there should be, enter full screen.
Enter full screen.
Or slideshow.
Which one do you want?
Slideshow. There we go, perfect. Alright, if you wanna go to the next slide. Thank you, Terry, for doing this.
Does it do any automatically here?
Nope, when you click on it, it will go. Um, it's only nine slides, so. Um, really tonight, we just wanna go over the high level key data points from the housing study we think are very relevant to today's housing market and what's going on with the town and village of Ludlow. Um, oh, it's an automatic, if you wanna just go to full screen, yeah.
Okay, wait. Do you just go full screen? And go back?
Yeah.
Have done this far?
Hmm, yes. So tonight, we'll be going, going over some, uh, key housing data, some of the core challenges associated with it, the environmental constraints, tools and strategic policy levers, and then we're gonna provide you some, uh, actionable next steps as our conclusion. Sorry, Terry, I know.
No, no.
I can come sit next to you if you want.
You wanna do it?
Yeah, mine as well, why not, yeah.
Why don't you sit next to me and do it? Yeah. Wait, let me go over here, so you're not stressed with them. We can not plug it for a minute, it won't die right away. Here you go.
Alright, so, this is a really fascinating data point right here. Um, right now, over sixty-eight percent of the homes in Ludlow are considered seasonal or vacation homes. Um, compared to the rest of the market, um, Vermont overall is only fifteen percent seasonal, so comparatively, it's a pretty big metric that we're looking at right here. And I pulled this data from, um, Vermont Housing and Finance Agency has housingdata.org. Um, the data in there is, it doesn't always align with the MLS, so I've been working with the Springfield Regional Development Corporation to also get a lot of the data, um, points, to make sure it's all aligned, but for purposes of reference points, housingdata.org is where I'm pulling a lot of this information from, um, and it, that's coming from the Vermont Housing and Finance Agency. So, I thought that that was just absolutely fascinating, I feel like sixty-eight percent doesn't necessarily fully reflect, um, everything with Ludlow right now, but that's what's released on the VHFA website.
I'm surprised, it's, I'm surprised, it would have been higher.
I thought it'd be like eighty, huh?
Yes, I thought so.
That's what I thought as well, um, but this is the data that we're given from the state, so that's what we're gonna measure it with right now.
So these are, but these are houses, not rental units.
They're, so, so under.
Buildings, I guess.
Yeah, so it goes by ACS classification, so they do it by seasonal recreation or, or occasional use units, um, are considered the seasonal or vacation, um, units, basically.
So that includes short-term rentals? Right.
And that includes condos on the mountain, and, or off places.
Like the time shares.
Okay.
Or.
Is that ju, like, is that a residentially zoned property?
That's a good question.
Cause I'd be curious if there's, just with the renter thing, like, those would be commercial buildings that are, that are residential housing, um.
Like a multifamily.
Yeah, or, yeah, some of those, just curious how that, um, how they pull that in.
Yeah, that's a good question. That is a good question, I would say the multifamily probably falls more under the eight percent renter, which seems more aligned with Ludlow, um, as far as the rental market. Um, and let's make this a conversation, this is a short presentation, so, please, let's have a dialogue about this, cause this is really, really fascinating metrics that we're looking at right now. Um, on top of that, right now, this is a huge issue. Um, forty-three percent of renters and thirty-six, thirty-six percent of owners are considered housing cost burdened, which means they're paying over thirty percent of their income on mortgage, rent, insurance, taxes, um, and you can see statewide, that really kinda, I mean statewide, it's fifty-one percent of renters are considered cost burdened. So it's not necessarily unique to Ludlow that a lot of people are struggling to be able to afford where they live right now, um, but for purposes of us being in Ludlow, let's take a magnifying glass and really try to hammer down what's going on with this.
I, I had a question about this, so the, the top line, Vermont, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, thirty-three, all that. That doesn't seem like a big enough amount for all of Vermont, if you put those figures together. What am I missing? Eight hundred thousand plus people.
I guess we'd have to add more.
Is that unique people? Or households?
Households, yeah. Households, so that would make sense why, like, our statewide population's around six hundred fifty thousand, but when you're looking at a household, you're looking at all the members that live within the house.
Okay. I guess if you added them all way across.
Yeah.
Be higher.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask.
That's a good question, yeah.
It's a good question. Okay, so some of the core challenges is very clear, um, we have affordability gap for the year-round workers, and I think that's really critical to highlight that term, year-round workers in Ludlow. We have a lot of seasonal workers here. Um, we also have vacant, vacant neighborhoods in the off-season, stick season, we all know how town looks during stick season.
In mud season.
In mud season, um, which contributes to staffing instability for our central services, um, schools, EMS, healthcare, we've seen schools close, um, and residents are priced out by the competition for second homes and short-term rentals, which I understand that's something that the town's diligently working on right now, so that's a positive point. Um, we also have the environmental constraints, um, flooding, landslides, wildfire, um, obviously, the July twenty-twenty-three flood was horrific. Um, critical zones are the Black River, Lake Rescue Pauline, and the Chemo slopes, and of course, we also must align with the local hazard mitigation plan, um, if we have any questions on that, um, Ally and Martha are experts on the local hazard mitigation plan, so. Any questions? So some tools and strategic policy levers, um, I understand that we are working on updating the bylaws right now, and Martha's gonna dive into a lot of this, and is, are currently working on addressing many of these policy levers to fix the affordable housing. Um, and afford, there's state statute definitions for affordable, so I'm not gonna get into that right now, but, um, the, the enabling ADUs, the mixed income and higher density, that is also a result of the Home Act, um, of two thousand twenty-two that the state passed. Um, there's also the lease the locals program, which they're doing in, um, Provincetown, Massachusetts, and it's, it's led by this program called PlaceMaker, and I reached out to them today just to get some more information on it, cause it just seems really interesting to see, they, basically what they do is they provide the gap, like, if, if somebody who's normally a short-term, uh, rental landlord, if they lease to a year-round renter, um, this, it looks like this company comes in and provides that gap, that, um, amount, just to create more year-round renters. So I'll have more information on that hopefully in the next couple days.
So the company is using the money?
And that's, that's what I was.
Well, I, I looked this up, like, I, cause I heard about it about, I don't know, maybe almost two years ago now. And what I read, when I read it, it was their pilot program, two years ago, but it sounds, and I looked right on the Provincetown webpage, and what they said is they designate a certain amount of money. Like, I, like, maybe it was three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand, okay? And in order for a, um, a property owner renting to somebody to access it, they had to apply, obviously, but there were stipulations, for instance, you had to rent to someone who lived and worked in Provincetown. And then it, and then it was like a grid, and it, um, like, it started with a, a studio apartment, one person, studio apartment, two-person studio apartment, and it would incrementally get bigger, with the highest at the bottom of the chart being three people who lived and worked in Provincetown in a three-bedroom home. And so that was the highest amount, and the highest amount was twenty thousand dollars, and the lowest amount was like five, or something like that, I don't remember exactly, but to me, it just made so much sense, especially, you know, we have that, um, one percent tax now, if the Select Board just designated a portion of that, just whatever they, how much they thought they could afford, like, two hundred thousand, and that, in Provincetown, once they hit the ceiling, then you're done, there's no more. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, so it really does fill in that gap of the income that they could have gotten from an Airbnb or something by renting to full-time people who live and work in Provincetown. And it's right there on the webpage, anybody can look it up.
That's really cool.
I thought so.
It would be especially good in, like, right downtown where there's water and sewer and shuttle services and all that stuff.
Right, or, I mean, it could be. But they would have to work in Ludlow too. And they have to have a, you know, you know, there's, I don't know all the details, but they have to be able to be approved. So the landlord has to be approved, the resident has to be approved, and they have to certify or have something from their employer. Like I said, it was like two years.
Cause there's not a whole, like, year-round employment in town.
But still, but those are the people.
Yeah, exactly, I know, yeah.
That you want to live here.
You could even, you could make it to Windsor County, or Windsor-Rutland County, things like that.
Well, that's cool, yeah.
Exactly, because it's statewide, we're just hit a little bit harder than other towns.
So that would be a great thing for us to all look into.
Yeah.
And I reached out to them as soon as I hear, and if maybe more people reach out, they'll be more inclined to really ramp it up and, you know, see what they can do for us.
Yeah, I think that would feel true.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Um, another thing, uh, capital investment, we have the CHIP program that was just passed in the legislation, the Community Housing Infrastructure Program, um, which is gonna provide, uh, statewide, about two hundred million statewide per year for the next ten years, is my understanding. Um, they're, they're still wrapping up the configurations of it, um, but, uh, obviously, Mount Ascot Regional Commission will keep everybody posted on that. Um, Ludlow's very lucky, we, we've got pretty good infrastructure, at least in the local area, uh, the village, so. Um, another thing I know that we're working on is neighborhood development area designation.
Yeah, how we doing with that?
I'm working on Chester's right now, I, I.
I'm gonna need to ask, do you know Martha, how we're doing on that?
We're working with Jason.
Yeah, Jason, it got submitted, Jerry and Jason submitted it last November, I think. It was approved by the boards, I keep meaning to ask Jason about that, but I'm always in the middle of a Zoom, I don't wanna bring up a different subject.
It's, I'll, I'll ask him, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll notice you last.
Yeah. Um, another thing could be a housing fund, a revolving loan fund, or tax stabilization, which can get a little tricky, but it's always yes or no.
Uh, Erin, with the capital investment, is that just for planning of water sewer, or is that for actually, like, we wanna expand sewer to somewhere?
So that's interesting, so for capital investment, usually there's a capital improvement program where you have plans, things that are usually out of your town planned, planned infrastructure, and then once you get the funding for it, you program it, and you, you determine over the course of ten, twenty years, when you're gonna contribute the funds for when it's programmed and allocated, um, for the actual construction and stuff, um, if that answers your question.
Okay, so we do that with, like, the fire department for equipment, right, the police department.
So capital improvement plan, I, I'm a huge advocate for those, um, just.
So what is, what is, um, Brendan, like, Brendan said at the last, um, meeting that I went to, that, um, trustee's meeting, that, um, he's gonna get twenty-three million or something to relocate the sewer plant, that's not part of all that?
No.
No, okay.
I don't, I don't think we have a plan for any infrastructure improvements or, or expansion, um, that I'm familiar with.
Okay.
That's also my understanding, yeah.
And I know some towns, um, will, when they, when they do the warning, they'll do, um, not in the budget, but they'll have it separate on the ballot to put, set aside funds for capital improvement and put them in buckets, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So that when something comes along, you don't have to worry about it later, like, like, you know, you're, you're putting it in there a little bit at a time over years, so if you have to do a big improvement, it's there. And I've thought for years that Ludlow would really benefit from something like that.
Yeah, cause we already do it for, like, a lot of different things.
And especially with CHIP coming, it, it might be something that it's time to kind of really look at, maybe putting one together, so.
And, and you do it as a separate article, so, and usually people want to do that, they don't want to have a big tax burden later on.
Judith, can you come to a Select Board meeting?
And say that?
I've been saying the same thing, no one just looked at me, because of, but I was thinking, I've been begging the Select Board for, in the.
To do that.
Town for ten years to do a capital needs.
I mean, I've worked with towns, it's on the school level, do that, and it's so beneficial, oh my gosh. And what is our lift?
A revolving loan fund, yeah.
Eric, I just realized, I don't have citizen comments on there, here, it's a complete mistake, so.
Oh, I, oh, I saw it.
I will call on you whenever you raise your hand, cause I completely spaced that out.
You're good, you're good, keep going.
Okay, so conclusion, actionable next steps, thankfully, we're already kind of tackling a lot of these checklists, so modernized zoning to allow workforce-oriented housing, that's by default through the whole act, um, and Act one eighty-one, and that's what Martha's working on, so that's, that's gonna be a really good tool for the town. Um, establish a housing commission for coordination and accountability. In our region, we have Chester, West Windsor, and Springfield, it's really amazing what they've been doing. Um, Chester, they have the town-owned site, um, I, I was meeting with, Julie and I were at a Let's Build Homes, uh, meeting this morning with, uh, it was Miro Weinberger put it together, it's a coalition, a statewide coalition, that they're lobbying at the legislation, and it, housing commissions are becoming really, really popular, um, just given the state of affairs with the housing market just nationwide, but especially locally in Vermont, I've seen that it really helps get action, like, just people take more action when you have a housing commission, and it's focused on creating, again, I use the term year-round housing, is what we need, we need more people, yes. Um, and then also, of course, leveraging state tools, which is CHIP, the Community Housing Infrastructure Program, which they're starting to release more information about it, it's still a little in the works, but it was approved, um, by the governor, and, um, we will be seeing those funds throughout the state. Um, Act one eighty-one, VHFA grants, the Vermont Housing and Finance Agency, NDAs, the Neighborhood Development Agency, um, which is also in progress, and then, of course, prioritize climate-resilient year-round housing, and I've seen Martha's put some language in the bylaws and whatnot to address that, so. That's the high-level overview of the housing study, if anybody has any questions, let me know.
So Erin, I've had the opportunity to chat with you, uh, outside of, outside of this, and I'm curious, um, because of your background in, you know, development and things like that, um, looking at Ludlow, where, what is the, the low-lying fruit that you see that, you know, hey, we, we want full-time year-round housing? Um, is there one or two things that you see, like, hey, this would be a great way for Ludlow to pick off some easy things, something that, um, is realistic, I know we've talked before about just Vermont in general, the, you know, getting, being able to put up the number of housing units we need, like, there's supply chain issues, there's like big, large things that, prohibit that, um, is there anything that you think would be like, hey, if you're gonna focus on something, tackle this first?
Yeah, a housing commission, for sure, um, and then doing a capital needs assessment, um, you know, when developers come in to look at areas, they wanna see that the infrastructure's gonna last for what they're spending money to develop. Um, so that's, that would be the low-lying fruit from my perspective, I don't know if Ally and Martha went away on that as well, do you see me?
Uh, I mean, you're doing a lot of the low-lying fruit work, the work that you have discussed, the zoning, the NDA, which we need to look into, it hasn't been a while since I heard anything about that, so we will look into that, um, other pieces, legislation, grants, um, there's more money coming through, um, infrastructure, the sewer, the dams, and just sort of putting, banking all of that because of, um, there's some opportunities because of the money that keeps rolling in from the July twenty-three floods, like the CBVGTR money that's coming, to sort of roll all of those and capitalize all those grants that are coming, stack them, so there's some opportunity for Ludlow there in the future.
And I guess to follow up, a housing commission, is that something that the Select Board puts together? Is that something that's an offshoot of the Planning Commission, how are those typically set up?
So I see housing commissions as kind of like the happy medium between the Planning Commission and the Select Boards to help push housing progress forward. Um, right now, all the housing commissions that I'm sitting on, we're doing just land inventories. Um, Chester's probably the farthest along, they've already identified the town-owned land, they've already done the site feasibility study, they hired the SE Group, who does a lot of work, I mean, they're a nationwide firm. Um, and West Windsor's also doing a housing inventory, West Windsor just won a municipal planning grant to do the affordable homes need study, basically, and they've identified, I think they've narrowed it down to like five properties now at this point, but it just, it, what it does is it gets all the community members who are eager, interested, and like hungry to really get this done, together in one room consistently. Um, and then, you know, West Windsor did a really, really great community outreach, just to start, and then they had, you, you never know what your town has until you do, like, an outreach event like that, so West Windsor already, they had people offering to donate land for affordable homes, you know, I, just, it's getting the tax, you know, it's, it's, there's doing these types of outreach, and again, as somebody who works with the Regional Planning Commission, outreach is critical in a lot of these things. Um, so just getting those responsible parties together to try to usher this along and really just focus on housing. I don't really see any downsides to.
What was the third town?
It's West Windsor, Chester, and Springfield, all have, um, in West Windsor, it's, they don't necessarily have, like, a designated, it's really their Planning Commission, uh, Chair and Vice Chair got together, and then they've been coordinating, and then they were working together with me to get the municipal planning grant to do the affordable home study, um, across their town, and it's really just coming along, I mean, people, it's, it's fascinating how passionate people get about it. I, I don't know anybody on any of these commissions that isn't like, just super focused and really doing a great job, just kicking the ball along and really getting it to proceed, so.
Eric, cause now we were talking about that last month, right?
Right.
Yeah, thank you, um, two questions if I could, the first one is, I worked in real estate housing, and I was a member of affordable housing boards, um, but specifically to Ludlow, um, or in general, I guess, first question is, how do you, how do you overcome the fear of change? Everyone wants housing, but they don't want it here, or here, or here. You know, who went through a lot of this, uh, sort of replanning the village, and there's a lot of pushback on density, on height, no one seems to want that, so I've argued a thousand times, it's hard to hear, is, is, you know, you don't get affordable housing without density. But density seems to be the problem that, that this town and folks have trouble getting over, and a lot of times they throw out, well, that's gonna change the character of our, of our town. How do you get, how do you get folks past the fear of change, in, in the fear of, you know, possibly removing an obsolete property, which the village has plenty of them, to put in a mixed use, or, or put that density in there without, you know, people going crazy about it?
That's a great question, so Chester did a design charrette, and they provided a couple different housing typologies, and, I mean, Chester's a small town, well over a hundred. And I mean, Chester's a small town, well over a hundred people showed up to this. And now I'd say the majority of Chester is on board and excited, at least for this town owned site that's right next to the high school. That can fit at least sixty to a hundred homes, whether it's cluster homes, cottage courts, town homes, single family homes. Like this is a, it's like a hundred acre site and about sixty acres of it is actually developable. So to get that kind of support was just really inspiring to see what they're doing. Um so I'd just say education and providing options and explaining, you know, the benefits of it. You know, what I'm hearing from a lot of residents, all these meetings I go to, they're telling me their kids and their grandkids can't afford to live here. Because there's no, and there's no place for them to really go right now. So even just kind of using that heart string to kind of, you know, say like, okay, well, do you have family or are they here? You know, I I've seen that helps a lot as well, so.
I have a question. What did you call a design what?
A design charrette. So it's T H A R R E T T E. It's a, it's a planning mechanism.
Okay.
Where you basically create a bunch of poster boards with information on it, and then people can go stick stickers.
Oh, yeah.
Where they, yeah, where they like to, what they wanna see, um and then.
Just that's just a different term I just hadn't heard.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and there's, so there's, there's a lot of um educational tools. I think there's like Charrette Institute nationwide. Um and I I can, I I'm, I've sent you probably the Chester things. But I can send, share it with everybody what it looks like, just so you can kind of have a visual.
Again.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll send Terry the uh Chester's design charrette boards and then the feasibility study that resulted from that.
Okay.
Um and it's.
But I I was gonna say too, the state already allows affordable housing to increase density for affordable housing. An extra floor, greater density. I mean, that's already something the state did last year.
Right, so and so it's almost by rate at this point, in 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 certain areas, the state is trying to, yeah.
Where there's water and sewer.
The problem is when you get to the local one, which is not by rate, because there's a lot of pushback on it, you know, so.
We're about to hear from Martha.
When you get to that piece of it, it sounds great, and the state allows it. But when you're actually going to say, hey, here's a permit, this is what I wanna do, it's almost impossible to do it. The second question if I could, um so scrolling back on the on the on the housing data. Um you know, the the big bad wolf is is the short term rentals. There's always a narrative, but that is the sole reason why there's no affordable housing, there's no rental units. You know, I wonder if if anyone has or if it's even possible to drill down on the data that, you know, right there you said eighty-nine percent or whatever it was. Is our second homeowners, and they know there's a thousand eleven hundred short term rentals. How do you get the data that would show? What what those short term rentals were originally? You know, were they actually rental apartments? Because everyone thinks that a short term rental was someone's rental apartment, which we know isn't the case. How do we show real numbers there? It's all just a guess, there's there's no, no one knows what those numbers are. And you know, if if short term rentals were banned a hundred percent, folks think suddenly there's gonna be this flood of affordable apartments in town. Which is is not reality. So how how do we drill down to know what real numbers are? If we put some of these, these uh bullet points in place, would that actually create rental units and how many?
I'm I'm not gonna relate this to the short term rentals, but I will say just data wise, statewide, um. We're small, we're a low populated state, right? So a lot of the data available is just, it's not what you'd get in like Massachusetts or somewhere else. So it it is, it's very difficult data to collect. I'll leave it at that, and then if somebody else who's been working on the short term rentals wants to expand on that, because I.
Well, yeah, the housing study, the housing study you sent me, that was one of the recommendations that the short term ren- rental are have a registry. That your town needs a registry for short term rentals. That was one of the problem solvings of this, in that, in that report that I got sent.
I know that the um town hall has most or a a large percentage of its um. Titles, deeds, property backgrounds on the computer.
Yeah, you can access that online, you can just look up a property in Ludlow.
So I was, I was wondering if there were a way to sort. Somehow by property age or something like that, you know? Like an an older home that somebody passed away and that the kids made into a short term rental.
Well, I can tell you right now, last September and October, I canvassed for our candidate. And I went to all the places on Pleasant Street that used to be rental apartments where people were supposed to live, and they all had those lock boxes. Every one of them on Pleasant Street. I mean, that's just anecdotal data that I collected myself. And I was like, you know, I had a list of people that have voted a certain way in primaries, and I went to those places and nobody lives there anymore. And they all have those lock boxes.
The older homes.
Yeah, the older homes on Pleasant Street with all the apartments like on the side and stairs and.
Yeah, yeah.
In the front and in the back, and nobody lives there anymore. And on Main Street, too.
And there's some private websites that show, because they must link to like VRVO and Airbnb and stuff um that costs money to look at. We, you know, are limited on funds, so I have not paid for that subscription to see how many there are. But, you know, I welcome anybody to.
Well, both Deckard and and uh Granicus came up with a figure of eleven hundred and something from Ludlow. And I think Jason's data, because I'm, you know, working on that land use stuff, his data said we only had like seven hundred and fifteen. I'm like, that's not correct. I said, why did both of these companies both come up with this? I mean, one said one thousand one hundred and fifteen and the other one said one thou- thousand one hundred and twelve, is that right, Noah? Deckard and Granicus?
Uh I think it's it's somewhere between nine hundred to twelve hundred. Um yeah, things are always always shifting a little bit.
Yeah, the Deckard guy, he's the email, told me one thousand one hundred and twelve, and I remember last year Granicus was.
I think it was very enlightening at the public hearing for those that were there for the um for the ordinance of the number of second homeowners who came and and they're renting. And um I think it's important to remember that these are people who have come to Okemo as just second homeowners. They fell in love with Okemo, they've rented in the past. Um they're here, whether it's one week a year or every other weekend, and they rent. Um that they, even if you said, hey, we're gonna give you a hundred grand to rent it, to rent it long term, they're gonna use it to some degree. Um so that's a, you know, that is a piece of it. And there's like, the village definitely, probably the house was originally built for a resident. Outside of that, there's like, you know, all the condo complexes, they were never built for residential use. Um I think we can go in circles about, you know, all, you know, all these causes or something like that. But the residential place on Pleasant Street, they sold it to, on the open market.
Oh, no, I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying it's not fair, I mean, they did it fair and square. I'm just saying that's what I observed, you know? There used to be people who lived there, because here's their name and here's their address, and they're no longer there. So. That would be, it would be fun for our board to see, um I went, I, one time at Regional, they had a workshop on affordable housing. Resources from the state and the uh national government and everything. And I wrote down all that stuff and I sent all the links to Diane, but somehow I never ended up on the town website. But I would love to have that workshop at our planning commission sometime. I mean, because I bet that has even changed over time. Those affordable, because I wrote them all down for my sister, because she's an apartment building up on High Street. And all the numbers, and she's called some of them, but nobody, no one has called her back.
And we've been discussing it, uh Mark, to also do more regional housing commission, getting, I know that our uh Springfield's Middle Income Housing Committee, they're meeting next month, next week. They're inviting the West Windsor folks to come and talk. And so, and that's another thing, getting involved with this, you find out who all the key players are, like putting these things together and of course leaning on us. Because that's what we're doing every day, is working with these housing commissions, so um.
Yeah, maybe it'd be funny to get someone from Chester to come and talk about that.
Didn't it used to be a Wyndham Windsor?
Wyndham Windsor Housing.
Right, and then there's.
And so they're an affordable housing developer, they're the, they actually, they're the developer, um and they're affordable housing. So they get the the funds from HUD and.
And Rublee Lane at the end of.
Yeah.
Black River Overlook.
Yeah, that that existed because of Jackson Gore, right? They had to build that as part of their Act two fifty.
No, I think that was solitude, wasn't it?
And then the.
That that already exists.
Oh, that was solitude, yeah.
Solitude, I think.
Solitude, Act two fifty made them put those Rublee Lane apartments in there, or houses, actually. And now the Wyndham Windsor Housing Authority took that over.
Yeah.
And they're in charge of the rent and everything. Well, thank you very much, Erin.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Allison.
Yeah.
For doing the research. Are there any more questions for Allison or Erin before we move on to our Martha and our work on town zoning?
Well, I guess my question would be. What are our next steps regarding a housing, housing?
Hmm, I'd like to, I'd like to learn more about this design.
Charrette.
Charrette.
Mm-hmm.
What do you think we should do?
I think that we have to work regionally. Because Ludlow's not gonna be able to, or they don't right now, supply the kind of jobs that um. Are gonna, you know, take up this housing. Um people might have um a year round job in Springfield and choose to live in Ludlow. So I think you have to think regionally, so I support the idea of working with other towns.
Yeah, me too.
Our town is really small that way.
I definitely do.
Yeah, me too.
From what I'm hearing, you you could never lose.
No.
You can only win somehow, whatever, there's a lot of different things you're gonna look at here. I've had a lot of thoughts through this, but I need to kind of sort of that and say, but that's a definite in my mind. Is to get with other people, because I'm gonna be honest with you, my feeling about all this stuff, we've been stuck for a while.
Too little.
And we're not doing any, we're really not doing anything about it, because I don't think we know what we wanna do. I don't think we understand what's out there.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of these other people that have gone that far are definitely have something to offer. So if we're, we're, we need, we need to move, we need to move on. We've been talking about it for.
Twenty years.
A while now, and um I'm not one to, I I wanna move on.
And we have somebody sitting in this room who's been on boards. Maybe we could give him a little time on the next agenda to talk about your experience with housing commissions and some of the things.
Yeah, you talked about um how you knew people were in town that would be willing to donate even and get things started. Didn't you talk about that last month? I caught on to that.
I don't like public speaking.
Yeah.
But we, 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 we as a group need to move forward.
Well, that's what I mean, but well.
Big, big time, and this and her.
We have a resource, and we have resources in West Windsor and Springfield, too, and Chester.
This little talk is, makes it even more prevalent, but.
Right.
You need to move forward.
Right, so and I think as the town moves forward with a planning commissioner or a planning director. And and um looks at the planning office, that's gonna be a huge help. And we need that, that's part of all of this. I mean, we're we're just a group, we need somebody who has the time.
I think people, once they get with other people, like Erin said, you feel way more comfortable to put stuff out on the table. Communicate back and forth. We're s- we're stuck.
Yeah.
And we're stuck in this, to be honest with you, we're stuck in this town. I've been here forever, we all have, but I look at this stuff as.
Here we are again.
I can look at it in many different angles, as a builder, as a, as a resident, as a, you know, a- all the above. And we are, we're stuck and we need to move forward.
Yeah.
So this, this was good, very straightforward, and we know the other people that are working on this kind of stuff.
Effectively.
Which we never, we didn't know. I I didn't know that other towns were doing what they're doing right now, and that's great. So.
Yes.
Just to piggyback on as June said, I think the ad has gone out, you know, so they're actually going to be looking to hire a town planner. And part of the description is exactly what you're talking about, so maybe, you know, that's really the catalyst, once that person takes place, you can form committees.
I agree.
Yeah, Brendan talked about that too. He wants a person that, in that office that says, how can we get this done? And uh somebody that says, oh, that's against this rule, that rule, this rule.
So important. Um Erin, how many towns, I know Springfield, of course, has a full time planner. What about uh Chester or?
West Windsor.
Yeah, see, I mean, that, I've said enough, but there's examples with other towns that have gone so far. They have staff in their town to promote that kind of thing.
And West Windsor is sort of similar to Ludlow in that it's Brownsville.
So there's, they, she's part time, and so, and that's, and for West Windsor, it really is, um it's uh.
Al, Julie.
Al and.
Julie.
God, I talk to her all the time, Jill. Um Al and Jill that are really kind of just, they took the lead and they, they're running with it. Like they put together, they helped me, they did the majority of the municipal planning grant application, and I just offered my two cents on it. And it was very successful, and they won it, the money for doing the affordable home study. And then even Chester, I was talking to them this morning, and Julie's like, all right, I've got this, what's next? And I was like, well, you need a pro forma, you need a market study. And because their housing commission has a housing trust set up now, they have funds to be able to allocate to these types of next steps. Because they put it together, and their housing commission's only been put together for a year and a half now, maybe? Like it 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 hasn't been together for very long, but the people that got together, it's once a month, we get together, we discuss, like, and we just share market metrics. It it, we really get together and talk about the big picture, how to take the big picture and get to the next level, so.
Got it.
Um.
So if you can think of somebody we can invite from any of those towns that can help us get started.
I would have Julie and Preston from Chester.
Yeah, Julie's really.
She's on top of it, yeah.
And the regional planning meetings, too, monthly meetings, she's a go get her.
Yeah, she absolutely is.
Julie, yeah, she's the town manager.
She's the town manager, yeah.
And Preston.
I would, so I I would say the key players right now are Julie, Preston. I would say um Al and Jill from West Windsor.
Jill?
Jill, Jill Appell, A P P E L L. Um and then from Springfield, Chuck Wise, and Chuck Wise is their town planner. Um but Vin Fuchsia, F U S C H I A, he's actually, I think he's CEO of the Black River um Innovation Campus, too. So like this is what I'm saying, these business people getting together um that are in the know of all these things. I'd say those are the tops, uh what was that, six people are just listed? That are really just making waves right now, so to the best that they can, right now.
Sounds like a good resource for us.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you, Allison. We are ready for uh Martha and our town zoning updates.
First, I need to ask about connecting, because I was trying to connect through one of the um.
Do you want my USB?
Uh it's like.
Do you want, do you wanna use my computer?
Um.
I have all your documents.
It said it was metered or something, is there one that's just a a guest for guest use when you're here?
Um the Ludlow, wait, go to the, where is it, Ludlow two point four?
Yeah, that's the one I went to.
And then you know the password? I have it in my notes.
Well.
Ludlow O six. Ludlow O six, yeah.
Ludlow O six is better.
And it seemed to connect, but it said something about, it didn't ask for a password. It's just when I logged, when I went to the internet to give the zoom, it said, this is the metered um site, so.
Can I go on the two point four one?
Yeah, that's the one.
And you, and you know the password?
It's not asking me, it's just telling me that it's metered.
No, it's working right now on my computer, I don't, this isn't a town computer.
I don't know.
Do you wanna just use my computer? And I have all your documents here.
Um, let me see if it'll work, so.
I gotta plug in too, see if it'll die.
Is that your new computer of the town?
This is the same one the town's gonna replace for the last ten years. Hasn't happened yet. Bruce Schmidt was the last one that made the motion, buy our new computer.
Well, how do you get a new computer?
Well, this isn't my, this is my personal computer, so.
Part calling in progress.
Not, not me a computer, the chair a computer.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Do you wanna drop the file on a USB and you're gonna put it into this?
I can do it.
I can do it for you. When aren't you in space, Martha?
You have all your documents, Martha, just as an option.
Can you resend her the link to the meeting back out and let her, oh, she is in?
Yeah, she's.
Yes, there you go. Alright.
Will, she has permission to share, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So I sent a few things in advance, copy of this document, where was that?
Yeah, Cheryl asked me if I wanted to make copies for everybody, and I said, nope, it's too old. She made us one, there's one right here.
And I did a little sheet, sheet, kind of progress today.
Yeah, that's gonna hopefully be better.
So, I'll, I was gonna just go through the changes that I've made so far.
Sounds good.
If you have any questions, I did a little bit with the districts for um, started, started looking at. So I went through Article One and Article Two and started looking at the um uses and purpose statements in the districts. I didn't do all of them though, but um if there's time, we could. Get to that. And a lot of this is just making it compatible with what was in the village regs. Occasionally, there's something that's new, it was in Act one eighty-one that didn't make it into the village regs. In this first section, all it, just a suggestion that you remove that once you pass the flood hazard regulations, put them in a second, separate document.
Yeah, Jared has already actually done that, gone through every reference to the flood.
Oh, he has, okay. So interpretation, um, so I made it so it max, matches the village. I highlighted, what I highlighted there in yellow is something that I think you should take out. Because it, although it is in the village ones, it basically negates the sentence right before it. So it says, these regulations do not repeal a null or in any way impair any permits previously issued. And then you say, provided however. That where these regulations impose a greater restriction upon the use of land or a structure, the provisions of these regulations shall control. That kind of contradicts the previous statement and really. Is um, is unfair to the person who got the permit and.
Yeah.
Built their house, and then you change the setback or something, um, can't expect them to. Abide by the new, larger setback or something like that, so that's why I'm suggesting that you take that out.
Yeah, because we're talking about permits that were previously issued and approved.
Right, they would stay, they are in effect, and they are not affected by any changes to your zoning regulations.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Severability, the, it's just a terminology. The legal term is severability rather than separability. Two twenty, I actually need you guys to help me out on, because I guess two twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-four, and two twenty-seven. Were warned for the April seventh hearing.
Yeah.
But when I was comparing the village and the town, there was a lot in twenty and twenty, twenty, two twenty and two twenty-one. That were different, but.
The only one that didn't pass was the one with the word stamped in it. That was the only one that didn't pass in April, for the town zoning.
So the differences that were there between the village and the town, those were intentional differences?
They were at the time, but we should take a look at them.
Yeah.
To see if we still feel like they should be there.
Okay, so in two twenty, for example. All this stuff in red, um. See, we'll back my email to you, uh. So the village regs have a list of four things that do not require a permit in this section. And the town regs only had one. It only had the grading, the minor grading escalation.
So we need to add these other three things to the town.
Yeah, I didn't know if they had been added and the select board had rejected them or.
No, they haven't been added.
Okay.
So we need to fix that.
So if you, so I'll leave them in for now, I did, I did add them.
Yeah.
So they match the village.
Yeah, they should be there.
Okay.
People should need a permit for a doghouse. Unless it's a ten thousand dollar doghouse.
It's got two stories, sleeps five people.
It's funny, cool.
So maybe it's the same in uh section two twenty-one.
Yeah, that word stamped, they did not like that word.
They don't like stamped, and if you just take.
Cause uh George Tucker was saying something, he was just giving the example, somebody might come in, it, it's, their designs is written on a notepad or a napkin. And that's acceptable, so they don't want, want that word stamped, it got stuck there. That was the only problem with it.
Okay, so if you just say drawings showing.
Right.
Floor plans.
He said that was fine.
Okay.
Even if it was on a napkin?
Okay, so I'll leave this.
Yeah, he was just, yeah, exaggerating.
Take that out.
Right, is that the way you remember him, Mr. Alden?
I, I brought up that objection, and my concern was stamped, you know, in this industry means.
Engineer.
By an engineer stamped, so.
So we just gotta get rid of that, alright, is that what, how you understand it too, is that's the only word we need to get rid of for that to be.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. There's nothing stamped.
Okay, so I'll leave everything else in there. All the same changes as in the village, two twenty-one, we talked about last time.
Yeah, we did that last time.
Yep, so I just put in the changes as we discussed. Two twenty-four. There you are. That one looks like it had already, that already matches the village.
Yeah.
Okay.
We made that change to the first paragraph, the last paragraph, that was necessary for the state changes.
Effective date, this now matches the village. Very minor changes, just took out the. The part that said that the permit would be effective immediately, because they always have a fifteen-day appeal period, so.
So Martha, of the ones that did get approved, is the only one that we have to send back to them, the two twenty? Adding those three other things that are exempt from. Okay, so that's the only one?
Um, I think.
The ones that we got approved?
I think you're gonna, the one that had, they were identical, town and village, was two twenty-four.
That's the only one that was identical?
Yeah.
Okay, so the ones we took to them were?
Two twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-four.
Five, two fifty-five, two ninety, and two sixty, those are the ones we took to them. Oh no, those are the ones we completed since then.
No, you did two twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-four, and two twenty-seven. Two twenty-four, I guess, is fine already. Um, I think initially I thought two twenty-seven was the same, but I think I found something different.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that these haven't been approved by the town, but we did work on. Two twenty-one point five, two fifty-five, two sixty, and two ninety, so it'll be interesting if yours matches the one we did, we did.
Yeah, no, we talked about those last time, I just put those into the document, so, yep.
Okay.
So there were four that went to a hearing, four more that you did afterwards, yep, that we've talked about before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, my number's mixed up here.
Terry, could you say the four that were done already?
The four that we had completed, I mean, and then we reviewed them last week, so you already have them in the minutes from last week. Do you have that, was that, that extra paper you attached? They were all in there.
Okay, but what are the four that were already approved by this select board?
I, I can't find that real quick.
Oh, let me.
Well, yeah. Because they were approved, I didn't save them. They got, they got fixed online finally.
So this one, section two twenty-six, the moratorium on permits, that I did change it, so it matches the village. Um, had a couple comments on it. Just, I just wanted to add the reference to uh the statute four forty. Forty-four, forty-nine D, right before the sentence it starts with. If the new bylaw amendment has not been adopted.
That's annoying.
Because it's kind of a confusing statute, and I think if someone wanted to go look at it, it'd be nice for them to know.
Yeah, I agree, we should add it, what do you guys think?
Yes, makes sense.
And I also was going to suggest changing the name of that section, because moratorium kind of sounds like.
Yeah.
Time out, you can't do anything, and that's really not the case, it's. So something along the lines of procedure for evaluating permit applications during a bylaw amendment period. Or something other than moratorium.
That sounds good.
Procedure.
Procedure for evaluating permit applications.
During bylaw amendment period. Yeah, that makes, it's much more clear than moratorium on permits.
And then two twenty-seven, which is the one that. You went to the public hearing on.
Right. Just the first and last.
I think this, the end of that first line was still in there. It's not in the village one, but it was still in the town one, and then at the end here. It still said village instead of town, so.
Okay, that's a good catch. Wrong zoning. Well, maybe there won't be two different zonings after this one.
Hope they're the same, so that when there is a merge.
Not only are they the same, but I, they are, their sections are the same, the numbers are the same, which is, which is very good.
It's gonna be helpful.
Section two twenty-eight, just added site plan. Two forty-one. So this is a new thing for, from Act one eighty-one. That. Once you have a complete application, you have to warn the hearing within a hundred and twenty days. So. I added it, it's not in the village, when you merge them, you have to put it into the village ones.
I'm just going with what the town says, because that one's newer than we looked at.
Just suggesting you replace Board of Selectmen with Select Board, it's more typical these days. Terminology. If there's no objection. Two fifty-five, we talked about last time, so I just put that in there. The administrative review.
The thing about that is, de- depending on who the administrator is, they might wanna take on more responsibility than Rose had wanted to.
Well, you can always do another revision.
Great idea.
I mean, when you merge them, maybe that would be a good opportunity.
Yeah, that's, that's true. Cause she just thought fire and police should always weigh in, but then Jared said you could have like a board of advisors that help you with that decision. Jared was saying something to me about the state just recently passed something that said you could, the Z A could make more of those decisions. By themselves, but they could refer to a board of advisement and not go through the D R B, that has like a fireman in a place, is that true?
That doesn't ring a bell.
Okay, okay. Maybe he made that. Sounds like a great idea.
I was gonna say.
But you're not, I'm gonna cross that out, Terry.
That could be another surprise.
Understood what he said too.
It's something he's heard somewhere.
Yeah, maybe it was something he was thinking about.
Or something from another state.
Um, that's gone.
I'm just saying.
It's gone.
Yeah, that our, our new Z A may wanna take on more permits and not so much of a D R B.
We'll see.
We'll see.
So you, uh, last time you did mention the districts that you wanted this to apply to, and you had the Lakes District in there. But you don't have retail use in the Lakes District, so I took it out.
Yeah, I can't think of any. Sugar House.
Yeah.
They, of course, would be grandfathered, but. They used to be a little store. What?
There used to be that little jewelry store.
That place, that place now is probably gonna get a flood by now.
Yeah.
Well, it's not written in stone, but for now, I, I took it out, if you add retail use to the Lakes District.
Well, how do we, do we wanna add that?
Your storage units.
Do we wanna add retail use to the Lakes Districts?
Why shouldn't you? You're already happy, so why shouldn't you, you know, like, maybe somebody wants to snack bar there or something.
I think you should add it, cause then when someone wants, cause they're up, there has to be, there must be commercial.
It's got a commercial problem, it comes right up through the.
Yeah.
Comes right up through hundreds.
Yeah, I think you want to add it.
You got Charlie's Place right up.
You gotta, you gotta have it in there, in my mind.
Yeah, somebody came to us years ago and wanted a body shop, and we, we granted that, um.
It's on the other side of the street.
Now they, they don't live there anymore, probably before Farm Ridge.
Oh, oh, I know, I, I know exactly where that is, I just take my car there.
So we do wanna add retail there.
So I'll add that back in, and when we get to the uses for the Lakes District, we can pop that in.
Yes, and we talked about one, we're gonna talk about the Lakes District to invite anyone here from the Lake Association to get their input.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, it would, might be a good idea to do them all at once.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
Just have one big thing and have all the districts and all the uses.
And have food.
Proposed changes to the maps, if you're gonna make those changes, and then get everybody.
Yeah, we don't need to have food. Well, they'll show up, believe me.
Just bring candy.
Last time we had food, there were people in the hallway, I'm just saying.
Food's a good idea.
They didn't have any food at that meeting the other night.
On Zoom.
Conditional use, we talked about last time, so this is just what we discussed last time.
Then we approved last time.
Um, changed that first paragraph the way we discussed, and then in the village, all this other stuff was taken out.
Yeah.
And basically replaced by the previous section, two fifty-five.
By the Z A section.
Yep. Plan two sixteen.
Erin and Allison, you don't have to stay, I mean, I, I know this is riveting conversation.
Yeah. What could be more fun? Yeah, so lighting was not included under site plan before, but you added it to the village, it's added here.
Oh, good, lighting's important.
That was the only. That was the only.
Right, I just wanna say, this is a lot of work, I really appreciate your work. This is a lot.
Not a problem.
Can't believe how far you got.
Uh, general standards, this again was in the. Village and is required to be in here, so. And this is kind of goes to your point about the character of the area.
I thought we weren't even allowed to say that anymore, character of the area.
Under certain circumstances, it just can't be a factor that.
Yeah, like in a mental health facility or something like that. Or transitional house.
That does say, I mean, that does weigh the D R B, you know.
Character of the area? But that changed the state.
You know, if the neighbors come down and give testimony, they 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 take that in.
Well, the abutters aren't vague.
Yeah, there there's also changes to the section on interested persons, which make it a higher level. You know, more people have to be. Concerned and involved. That was just clarifying. Yeah, this section two sixty point five just didn't have approved with conditions as one of the options, so I put that in there. And yeah, maybe I had not added that to the village regs, so it's another thing we can flag. If you merge them, keep that part.
Yeah, we're just gonna go with the town one. And then just stick all the village stuff in there.
Um, two sixty three point two, I'm just kind of flagging as if we have time when we're through with everything else, we might wanna come back to that.
Nonconforming lots.
Continuation of nonconforming lots or parcels, some of the language is confusing, I think, so. But it's not really a housing focus directly, so. Figure if we have time, we can come back to that.
Cause nonconforming lots in the flood zone would be. Different than nonconforming lots somewhere else.
Yeah, well, I don't have any suggestions right now, so I just.
Go back to it if we need to, which we probably won't, because we're under the wire.
I didn't flag this. My question was just, I was just curious about this. Um, application procedure for the P U D number four, it says a plat showing the number of dwelling units. Commercial units and commercial areas that could be permitted if the land were subdivided within the district in strict conformance with the requirements of zoning and subdivision. Regulations.
I don't think I've ever seen anybody do that.
Yeah, I was, I mean, since a P U D is kind of saying, okay, in this area, we're gonna apply different rules. It seemed like an odd request, kind of like. Extra work.
You're gonna ask me, I was wondering about that one.
Another thing, just.
I'll ask her about that one.
Maybe flag.
I can screenshot it.
Yeah, and the village regs, you made these deletions to two seventy point five, number seven and number eight. So I did the same ones. Here too, just changing the name of the.
Yeah.
Court.
Environmental court.
Two eighty. You guys do a lot of local act two fifty review, you do, okay.
We do.
Um, the only problem here was just in the formatting, so we'll we'll tackle that when we get through everything else. And then affordability, which we talked about last time.
Yep, lots of changes there.
Yep, so that now matches the village.
There weren't new changes since the village, right?
Pardon?
There weren't new changes since the village?
There was something about rounding up, which we talked about last time, so that's in here. So, yeah, good point, I mean, it matches the village, except that it's.
Except for the rounding up.
Clarifies the rounding up. And then.
We're already in the zoning.
Jumped to the Aquafer protection district, seems.
Just Andover Road, right?
Pardon?
Is that Andover Road up above?
Um, oh, sec- uh, section three just kind of lists all the. Districts.
Right. I'm just saying where that is, that's that's Andover Road, right, up Andover Road?
Oh, right, yep, down, down kind of at the end, yep.
It's something like two, I was having.
I have an actual hard copy of the map. I'm not good at switching back and forth, but yeah, it's. It's the blue.
Is that down at the end of Pleasant Street? Where is that?
Says Brooks Road. Snell Spring Road.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's very strict zoning up there.
Yes.
Cause it's.
Because that's, yeah, okay, I know where it is now.
Looks like there's a few roads, so there must be.
Where it all comes from.
There's been one more develop, development up there in the last ten years.
So I moved two unit houses over into the permitted use column. Just changed the names to the ones we used for the village, instead of accessory apartment, accessory dwelling unit. Childcare home, public recreation area, so. I was a little curious about the wildlife refuge. I've never seen that in somebody's permitted uses. Is there, is there a wildlife refuge there now, or?
That I know of, and we're talking about the Aquafer District, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
There is?
When you're heading north, I mean, south on. One hundred. I I've seen a sign that said wildlife. But I'm not sure if it's still Ludlow or if it's into Andover.
Is that just like a no development area?
Yeah, that's what it is, I bet.
Cause there is that little.
Take a screenshot of that one.
Section by the by the dams, like if you take the road from trailside.
Yep.
There's like that sign that's, I don't know, it's like ten acres or something, that's. It's, uh, I don't know, it's like a memorial wildlife refuge or wildlife area or.
Is it a bear refuge? We're all gonna drive over there and take a look.
Is it a bear refuge?
Oh, yeah, there is, there is bear territory up there for sure. That's probably what it is.
Well, they, it said something about, maybe it was the definition that said. Basically, there's a trail and a parking space, or maybe a few parking spaces.
I don't know about that, gonna check it out.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious.
I can't believe this whole room doesn't, nobody knows about it.
I go to Weston a lot, and I see a sign that says wildlife, but.
Except Alicia, Alicia's the only one that's seen it.
That's cause you don't go to Weston at least once or twice a week.
I do, but I take the back road.
I didn't, I haven't looked at the standards in terms of, you know, acres or setbacks or anything, yeah. Proprietary municipal district, that seemed pretty straightforward. Change anything, the Lakes District. Is, can people live there year round, or is that seasonal?
Oh, definitely.
They're not cottages anymore, let's put it that way.
Huge homes.
Right, okay, I ju- I think it'd be good to get that into the purpose s- uh, statement. A lot of the new state regulations talk about, is it year round residential, is it, does it have water and sewer, and so.
Doesn't have water.
They don't have sewer.
That's something that Ja- that Ryan was saying, that the town might wanna consider, because there's still like grandfathered. Places that are dumping sewage into the lakes. And that shouldn't be grandfathered anymore, that should be fixed somehow.
But. Flagging this as a purpose statement that could use some clarification and maybe.
In the yellow part?
Uh, yeah, I was, it says to protect shorelands of waters that are unsuitable for development. Then it says to maintain a low density of development, and to me, low density and unsuitable are kind of in conflict there, so.
Also, the state, since I bet this was written, has, you know, there's a lot of regulations about mowing and. You can't mow your, you know, you can't take down trees, you can't mow the lawn unless it was already there, you can't create any lawn.
Lake shore protection.
Lake shore protection.
You get two hundred feet off, it is all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, I did, I did look at that, you had it in there as when it was originally passed as an act, and so I looked it up and put it in there as. You know, the standard's where it is in the statute, so it's no longer a reference to. To the act.
That's tightened up the rules.
And I didn't say that it's you always require a permit, it's a you may require a permit, so. Depends, so I didn't wanna leave the shell in there either. The town residential district, so again, I moved two units over, changed the terminology. The things that I've just highlighted in yellow here. Those, I thought it'd be good to compare what's in the town residential district versus the village residential district. These things are only in the town, not in the village. Um, that probably makes sense, you probably don't want a campground in your village, but I just thought it would be worth looking at and considering. If there is anything in one or the other.
Yeah, why wouldn't you want an animal hospital in the village? Cause of the smell? We have a veterinary office in the village.
Yeah, and you did separate them out in the, um, village regulations, so that. You can allow, so they're no longer lumped together, because animal hospitals often have animals staying there overnight, and they might be outside in a kennel, and they might be.
Right, and I know Springfield's had issues with that, dogs barking all night.
So, yeah, and then in terms of permitted uses that are permitted in the village, but.
Are solar panels anywhere here, I see wind turbine is, a conditional use.
Well, the state highly regulates renewable energy generation.
I was surprised to see wind turbine there.
I was surprised to see wind turbine there also, um, something we can talk about, but not something I wanted to.
Right.
You know, just. I just wanted to highlight it as not being in one or the other, um. So they match pretty well on the permitted uses, except that multi-unit dwellings with four fewer units are allowed in the village. Not currently allowed in the, um, town residential district.
Are they allowed in the town if it has water and sewer?
Well, that's another thing that we have to talk about, so.
Local home park, don't we have one in the village?
Yeah, there's one right across from the high school.
Yeah, why is that not?
Isn't there some over on Pleasant Street?
That's, they're not in village.
Oh, that's not in village anymore.
They're in the town. But right down Main Street, that is in the village.
Yeah, but that, it's probably, that's in the village, right, so it's allowed in the village. Right? Yeah.
I guess my question is, why isn't it in both, is it in both?
It is in both.
Oh, I thought you said it wasn't in both, Mark.
The mobile home park is not in.
It's not in the village?
In the village residential district.
Oh, cause we have it, we have one, but wait, is that commercial though, where we have it? That's still commercial until, um, corner Dakota, right, that's still village and that's still commercial.
That makes sense, sorry, I just.
Um, so. The other thing that's gonna impact this is, so the new law is about if if it's a residential district and you have water and sewer. You have to allow multi-unit dwellings up to four units.
Where there's water and sewer, do you put that in parentheses?
Where there's water and sewer, so I mean, that's one question is that we'll, we don't have to answer tonight, but. Do you want, and I sent you a map separately, showing a split, an area. That extends from the village into the town, where there is water and sewer, it is a residential district, and. Technically, right now, in the town residential district, the the lot size is a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, but in those areas.
Hundred and twenty thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Hundred and twenty thousand?
Three acre, isn't it three acre zoning? It's three acre zoning.
Yeah. But in those areas legally, because of act one eighty one.
It could be five acre zoning.
It has to be eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet.
Which is five.
One fifth.
One fifth, I mean, yeah, five units per.
Five units per acre.
Five per units per acre.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's, right now, it's a conflict in your.
We need to add that, but we need to say where there's water and sewer, right? Why don't we do that now?
That would be one way to do it, I mean, you could also show it on the map, and. I kinda wanted to, I don't know how much you've talked about the future land use maps that.
Haven't talked to anybody about it. We're still working on it, it's regional.
I think that's gonna. These things all kind of.
Yeah, we should probably, you know, that's gonna be a lot to change all those headings.
Yeah, I mean, the the regional plan has to include. Village centers, the planned growth areas and things like that. Um, and your planned growth area is gonna be your area where you have water and sewer and sidewalks and and things like that, and.
The state has come up with whole different categories for village center, village area, land growth area, um, I forget what's the, like, the industrial one called.
Oh, enterprise.
Enterprise area, transitional area, do we even have a transitional area, I don't think so.
I think some of the current sort of.
Where you're trying to.
Some of the commercial growth that's kind of outside.
So maybe where like subway was, well, no, cause that's still a village. Where the sewer plant is, that would be our transitional area, anyway, we have to go, go with it, yeah, cause that's a lot.
But when you get, I mean, so this may be, they may inform each other that those processes, that's why I was saying, I don't know that you need to change it right now, just.
Let's not, cause that's the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, you may wanna create a separate district, like a high residential.
Hey, I really wanna create that that wilderness district, what was that called, the? Um, you know, where you have ten acre zoning, way on the boonies.
Well, there's, uh, so there's rural conservation is one of the categories in the future land use.
Yeah, rural conservation.
Yeah, there's three rural ones, there's conservation, ag and forestry, and then general. And general's kind of like a, you know, large lot, rural residential area.
Well, years ago, my husband and I went to the planning commission many years ago and and fought for the three acre zoning, and that's why that's in here. But, you know, there's places, like I live four miles out, and I love to see higher, you know, lower density out there.
Well, I mean, when we get to looking at your maps. You can talk about. Changes that you might wanna make, and then the state's gonna come along after, after all these future land use maps get approved. So one of the reasons for doing the village areas and the planned growth areas and stuff is that act two fifty won't apply. Once those get approved by the state. Which will save developers a lot of time not to have to go through act two fifty.
And also there are N D A status, we'll do that too.
It's, yeah, I mean, that's kind of what, any areas that were N D A, N D As or get approved as N D As. Are probably gonna be planned growth areas on the future.
Right, they automatically be planned growth areas.
Yeah. So. But trying to get into map changes. But trying to get into map changes right now, I think, might be.
Yeah.
More than we, more than we can.
We'll be here for a few hours.
Yeah. This is. RC one.
Martha, how, how far did you wanna get?
Oh, whenever you guys have had enough, we can, we can pause.
Can we stop now?
Absolutely.
Is this a good place for us to stop? The last thing I have is not long at all, I just wanna give you an update on that.
Okay.
I'm good for that, thank you so much.
Sure, no problem.
I mean, I understand how much work this was, this is a lot of work. To try, you know, to go through the village and Act one eighty-one and all the new stuff and. Apply that to our zoning, it's just a monumental task and we did it brilliantly.
Well, we still have Article four and Article five that I haven't, that I haven't got to, so.
But we don't have Article six.
Yeah.
Hopefully, after the, after the, oh, Karen. Thank you so much, Allison.
Yeah, we'll see you next June.
How's that little third grader doing?
Um, uh.
Fourth, fourth now?
Well, they're combining two grades.
Oh.
Which is a whole other story, this one. And the other's fifth.
Oh, that's great, you got, so, three, four, fifth.
Yeah, a two, three combined.
I had a two, three combined once, I loved it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Absolutely loved it, but we switched for math, so we only had second grade for math. Okay, I guess we're gonna, Martha, thank you so much, we're gonna move on to our, our next agenda item, which is. Working on our goals. And I thought just tonight I'd um tell you about the, so the village infrastructure updates, I sent everybody a picture of my little post-it notes. Um, Ted, we put yours up there, the ones that you had sent through email. And um, I thought we could just talk about pedestrian safety, the parking, um, part of it tonight. I did go to the last two village trustees meeting, the first one, I just presented our ideas. And then I learned after that, if you wanna actually see what they think and if you wanna accomplish it. You need to write to the, you know, have it put into the agenda, you know, action steps, like what are they gonna do about it? So I did, at the second village meeting I went to, I did um ask Brendan to put it in that way so that. We could ask them, you know, what they think, what they would be willing to do this year, what they would budget for next year. And it was all positive, Brendan said, we'll, we'll take a look at it. Brendan said, um, some things they could do right away. Were the um. The sidewalk extensions, yeah, the sidewalk enhancements and extensions.
Where are you?
Right here, actions we can take now, no public hearing required.
Okay.
He said those are things that, you know, that they, they have the money for and that they could accomplish actually even before the end of the year. So the sidewalk enhancements and extensions, um, we were suggesting sidewalks between the stoplight and the bridge before Shaw's. And from Pleasant Street to the walking bridge. Um, and if the FEMA buyout comes through, they're on board with creating a, a green space at the end of Mill Street. Where that mill would be torn down by the river. Um, prioritizing ideas with high-foot track pick and safety concerns. They're gonna have the lines painted at the crosswalks, the six inches that glow in the dark when the headlights hit them. And um, what did Bob Brand said about that? Is they put some kinda little pellets in too, that makes it even, yeah. He, he knows a lot about it, he actually.
Well, he was a paving guy.
He was a paving, yeah.
He was, he was the main man, yeah.
Yes, he had his own paving company, so he had even more things to add to that, to get the painted lines. So they're really obvious. Um, about the. Stoplight timing, he said he was gonna talk to the police about that, to the police chief about that. Guess he has something to do with that, so that when you're going to walk, you're not being run over by people that are stopping and turning left, turning right on red. So that's something that can happen.
Sure, just, just to um.
Yeah.
Go back to the crosswalks. I know the crosswalk um by Shell has been moved up. So it's kinda in, in the middle now, of the Shell. And um, the plan, the state, when they finish the uh paving. The two parking spaces in front of the Shell is, is now the crosswalk.
Oh.
So, I think it's.
Parking spaces?
But that's okay, I mean, it's safe now, it wasn't before. But I think that um it's gonna be critical that those no parking spaces don't get used. Because if they do get used, when people are trying to cross there, they're gonna come out in between two cars. Or at least one, so um, that, that's gonna be a critical area to watch. And there's also um, on the other side of the street, over by um. Uh Johnny's and that building, um. Those two spaces are not parking spaces, but people park there. So, they've created what looks like a safer crosswalk, but it's not gonna be if people park there.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, I'll ask about that.
Yeah, whoever needs to enforce that.
Cause the other crosswalk was basically right in the, where people were turning out of Shell and getting onto the road, right?
That's right, but there was, there was not a parking space there. It didn't make it safer, cause there wasn't any kind of um. Noticeable crosswalk, but now that, that has to be monitored.
I'll ask about that, for sure.
Cause people are already parking there, because they did before.
Gonna need to put something there.
Absolutely.
You're gonna have to, wha- whatever that means, I'm not the traffic guy, but.
No, you're right.
Signs, signs, signs that can be taken away or, or posts, I, I don't know.
Yes, so that people don't.
Just gotta stop, you just gotta end it.
So that's, that's critical to that space.
The only way you're gonna do it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
The last couple things we had, the um speed reduction, obviously, they agree, we have to wait for the construction to be over. Cause we have to have the study done, which I think Logan is the one that would end up doing that, um, of how fast people are actually going. Um, and the other one is um, was the other, oh, the parking, increased parking we talked about. So the things they agreed to was begin the sidewalk and crosswalk improvements via public, public works. ADA compliant, of course, coordinate with our traffic signal contractor to assess changes to the pedestrian signal. Uh, schedule an engineering traffic study for post-construction to support a formal speed limit reduction. And continue community outreach to reinforce pedestrian safety awareness, the last thing we talked about was the parking. And we had the suggestion to have people park on only one side of Pleasant Street, the actual side that's selling commercial. Like where Ginny Snyder lives, and create some dag, diagonal spaces there, Bob Brand didn't think there was room, and the conclusion was. We'd have to have a traffic study on that, to see where.
Yeah.
I, I wanted to just like invite Ron Tarble to one of our meetings and just see.
Diagonal?
Yeah, we talked about, I know he, Bob Brand didn't think there was enough room there.
I, I would guess right off, there isn't enough room.
And then they talked about spaces down by the library, and he also felt like, we talked about spaces down by the library that were diagonal in front of the library.
That, that has possibilities.
It's wide there.
Yeah, cause there's a lot of room there, but Pleasant, I, I think diagonal on Pleasant Street. Even though the left side going down Pleasant Street is the side you should put them on. I don't know, that's a tough one, that's a tight one.
Yeah.
Traffic studies, I think they're.
Anywhere, they have to do is like an engineering.
Save the money on the traffic study and just determine it.
Yeah, I wish we could do that.
Having lived on Pleasant Street where we would have people park on both sides.
Yeah.
You got like one.
Oh, no, that's, you can't do that. In the diagonal.
It is dangerous. Traffic study, could a possible outcome be, I'm just saying, parking on one side of the street? And you can't park on the other side.
I would do that right now, I wouldn't do diagonal on the left side going down, I would do that side. And I would not park on the right side going down Pleasant Street.
Right.
That would be done.
Yes.
But that's just me, I, I'll take, I'll take, I'll take the check now, please.
Yes, yes, really.
I don't know, maybe there's other, there's other thoughts, obviously, but.
So when you say going down, you mean?
When you're cut, when you're going from west to east down Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
Diagonally on the left side parking, probably, that's probably the only option you have, right side is not good in my mind. It, it bumps you over it, out of the lane, when you get down, two-sided, forget it, like you just said.
And if you have it on one side, you paint lines, narrow that road, people are gonna go slower.
They'll, they'll, yeah.
Just so we can do something right now with it, though, do you think we should invite Ron? Cause I just feel like, the last time we did this, Aaron was on the board, he did this full, he measured everything in town. He came up with these suggestions and everybody just shot it down right away when we went to the trustees. Um, but I think if you start with somebody like Ron and he's in charge of the parking line and painting the lines and all that stuff. If you invite him in, he might have ideas for us.
I think if you, if you invited him and see if Logan could come with like, hey, here's some data about narrow roads.
Yeah.
That could be something that, you know, he's able to, like, okay, we have a little backing behind it, here's how it work, um.
Are you guys gonna invite both of them to talk about that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, if you get the buy-in from Ron, like, that's, that's good versus, hey, we're doing this.
Because now would be the time to do it, before winter.
But anyway, I feel a little, little bit of victory there that we can get some of these pedestrian safety things in right away. And they'll, will, they will budget for the other ones, they said.
With the sidewalks and that paint, I don't know, like, it seems like we, every winter, we, we end the winter. Paint's all gone, um, they could paint it way later, I don't know if there's a way for the town or. Like, hey, we're gonna paint in, you know, November first, and then we're gonna paint on May first, and obviously weather dependent, but. Um, and a minimum just the crosswalks, um, that could be a way to, you know, cause especially the one. On the access road, that gets hammered and like crossing the, crossing the access road there.
They all get hammered.
By um, yeah, real, most of them, but.
They do.
Um, yeah, that could be, that could be big.
Okay, so we're gonna invite Logan, cause he does that safer street stuff too, the top of being the transportation person at regional.
Cause I remember um. Can't think of his first name, Gerard, he was complaining about it at town meeting, that you couldn't see any of the crosswalks.
And that was.
Mr. Gerard, he was complaining about something at town meeting?
Stop. No, but he had, he had a valid point.
Yeah, I know, he does, yeah. Unindue man.
But it's true, by the end of every winter, half the, half the crosswalks are scraped off, basically, yeah. So we really do have to have a.
Um, what, speaking of crosswalks, what's the story with um, in front of Dunkin' Donuts?
Oh, yeah.
Are those parking, those, those are not parking spaces.
They're not, everyone parks there.
Well, that's my point.
Yeah.
Is, if, when there are no parking spots, somehow those have to be blocked off. Or monitored, or what's the point?
Or they have signage that says no park, no parking, no parking. That's what.
And it, it told, well, I don't know, but, yeah, I mean, if it's for safety and it's for pedestrians. And there is no parking for reason, the, the state designated the no parking down by Shell. So.
Good to know.
Yes, that wasn't the town, that was the state.
They had Shell do those crosswalks over though, that was a good thing.
In front of Dunkin' Donuts, there are line parking spaces.
That's what I thought, I parked there before myself.
I, I think when they do the lines, they're not gonna be there, but we'll see.
Yeah.
I know they're not gonna be in front of Shell, and I don't think they're gonna be in front of Dunkin' Donuts, but we'll see, real soon.
Yeah.
Yep.
Like, next week, maybe.
Do we have any other comments on our pedestrian safety parking stuff? Okay, um, any citizen comments?
Uh, just on that topic, rather than all these Band-Aids, why, why doesn't the town or the board? You know, re-engineer a sidewalk into the front of the, either the Dunkin' Donuts? If how that, I wasn't involved, but how that got approved is incredible, I mean, it's. You can't, you can't get it out of that lot, and I know that I had the grandfathered sign there, which is why the sidewalk is, isn't there. But in the name of, of public safety to put a sidewalk in, you know, something should be done to that sidewalk to be moved or eliminated.
When that was first permitted, there was a sidewalk there. But then, when, and I don't believe it was part of the permit, the sign that's there used to be. Uh, uh, when you're looking at Dunkin' Donuts, it used to be to the right, not in the sidewalk. Then they moved the sign, and I, I don't know how they were able to do that. And so then this, once the sign was there, the sidewalk went away, that's the story.
Yeah, that's why we asked for a sidewalk.
And, and I think if you look at their original permit, that sign is not in a place where it should be. So, maybe um, the zoning office could look at that. They have in the past, but nobody ever took any action to have them move the sign.
I'll take a look tomorrow. So next month's.
Thanks, thanks Charlotte.
Noah?
Um, just, just housekeeping, I don't know if there's any way for um, for like, what you guys were just talking about. The, whatever document that was for the public safety, the Aaron's thing and like a redline version of the, the flood doc, like I. I didn't find any of that stuff on the packet, um, so I don't know if that's private stuff or, um, but, um.
In this packet?
Yeah, for, for tonight's meeting, um.
I sent it to Charlotte today, um, all of the. All of Martha's stuff, but I didn't get it till like this last week, so it wasn't in the original stuff that I sent.
Uh, well, it's not on the website right now, and that's, that's all I get, so.
Yeah, it's not on the website because it didn't come in in time to get it on the website. Um, and she sent, Martha sent me that stuff this week, during this week, so I, this morning I emailed Charlotte and I sort of put it all in here. Yeah, and her stuff is in here, Martha's stuff, not all of it, but because she said, do you want me to copy the entire zoning document, I said no.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I wanna come back as a tree here, that's.
Um, so I don't know if I, if I can get an email for that, um.
Yes, of course, I'm sorry, Noah, I'm, okay. I should have CC'd you on that.
And that's all good, um, the new, the new town email thing is working, uh, which is great.
Okay, so you're, you're what, um, and Schmidt at Lalo dot VT dot, all that stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we all have that?
I.
I don't think our board does, I think the J R B just got it.
Board, okay.
I asked for one because I'm tired of everybody in the world having my private email address. When Tori sends stuff out.
The cost is very low, I think.
It's three dollars apiece.
Yeah, I think anyone who's, public stuff, like, if we're sharing documents and you're, you know, a, a public. Person, um, or doing that in the interest of town, I, I think it would be something that we should have and just, hey, if there's a request for.
Records.
Like, just having that is an easier way to, to do it, so, um, I would, I would support. You guys definitely getting that, um.
Okay.
And then, uh, just the. I didn't hear it clear, like, for the housing stuff, like, after Aaron presented that stuff, but. Kind of reading what Ted was, Ted was saying, like, you guys have put a lot of stuff into that, it's time to, you know. Pursue that housing commission, um, and just curious, that was the direction, um.
Yeah, I'm gonna invite those people next month, is everybody okay with that? I mean, I guess we're talking about next month, month's agenda.
Yeah, I think, I think that, like, you guys do so much and then, you know, okay, you do all that stuff and then now you got flood hazard and zoning and, and all that stuff, so.
It would be nice to have a permission to do that, cause we have a lot on our plate right now.
Yeah.
The town zoning and the town plan, having to be done in two thousand twenty-seven? Okay, so we've got next month's agenda, we're gonna. Talk about these, um, more about parking, invite Ron and Logan to talk about that and, um, invite. Julie Preston from Chester, Alan Jill from West Windsor. And maybe Aaron again, we'll see how that goes, or Chuck Weiss from, um, Springfield, he's a town planner. And Ben Fuchsia, we'll see who we can get to come, so we can talk about that.
Even if they come by Zoom.
Yeah, by Zoom, definitely, okay. Yeah, cause they might have meetings at the same night, so we'll see who I can get.
Well, and then, then they don't have to travel up here.
Yeah, I really like, I really like that idea of the design, whatever that was.
Charette. Charette, charette.
Charette, charette, I took Spanish, not French, but, okay, um, other business? Uh, entertained motion to go home?
So moved.
All those are favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 thank you very much.